And this is Gavel to Gavel, WCVW TV's complete coverage of Richmond City Council. Good evening once again, I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our second meeting of the month of May, and you're probably wondering why are we here on Tuesday instead of Monday? Well, very simple, Monday was a holiday, so we are here on Tuesday. This is the only time of the year we meet on a Tuesday instead of a Monday. Also, it's the last of five consecutive months where we had two meetings each month, starting next month for June, July, August, September. We're scheduled to have just one meeting, though I say "scheduled" because they are allowed if they need to call a second meeting on the fourth Monday of that month. So, we'll find out as we go along. But right now, we're having our second meeting of May, and then we will not have another meeting until June 8th, and then not another until July 13th. So, let's see what we got going on for tonight. Sixteen items on consent, two on regular, let's take a look at where we are. Item one, Ordinance 2014-208, and this one is establishing a Richmond Archaeological Commission that's being continued till July 13th. Item two, Ordinance 2014-217, this would establish a downtown tourism zone, and that's being continued till July 13th. Item three, Ordinance 2015-96, authorizing the CEO to execute a project agreement for use of Commonwealth transportation funds. And this is for the purpose of receiving a grant of $1.5 million to fund Phase III improvements to Main Street Station, that stays on consent. Item four, Ordinance 2015-97, authorizing the CEO to execute four invoice agreements between the city and Greater Richmond Aquatics Partnership. And what this is for, this is for renting a swimming pool facility for the Department of Public Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Competitive Swim Team Practices. So that one stays on consent. Item five, Ordinance 2015-98, special use of 320 North 32nd Street for the purpose of a mixed-use development, that one stays on consent. Item six, Ordinance 2015-99, this is authorizing use of real estate at 501 North 2nd Street for the purposes of constructing a four-story office building. This one is going to be amended tonight and then continued until July 13th. Item seven, Ordinance 2015-100, this concerns the Main Street Uptown Parking Overlay District. This will modify the boundaries of such district and establish some new parking standards, and that stays on consent. Item eight, Ordinance 2015-101, amends the official zoning map. This is to rezone certain properties along West Main and West Carey Streets between Harrison and Meadow, and includes certain properties in the PO3 Main Street Uptown Parking Overlay District, that stays on consent. Item nine, Ordinance 2015-103, this concerns real estate taxation of certain dwellings of the surviving spouses of members of the armed forces that were killed in action. This is for the purpose of reflecting amendments to the Virginia Code, which basically would give them lower rates, and that stays on consent. Item 11, Ordinance 2015-106, this is one of those papers that declares a public necessity exists at 1114 North 26th Street, authorizes conveyance to Elder Homes Corporation, makes such property available for redevelopment, stays on consent. So this is number 12, Ordinance 2015-107, again, public necessity, 1207 North 27th Street, and conveys the property to Elder Homes Corporation for redevelopment. Item 13, Ordinance 2015-108, declaring a public necessity at 1208 North 33rd Street, and this authorizes conveyance to Richmond Metropolitan Habitat for Humanity for making property available for redevelopment, stays on consent, as does 14, Ordinance number 2015-109, public necessity at 1425 North 20th Street, and conveying that property to Richmond Metropolitan Habitat for Humanity, making such property available for redevelopment. Those are all staying on consent. Item 15, this authorizes the CEO to execute a standard project administration agreement with VDOT to provide funding for the restoration of Main Street Station. And then item 16, Ordinance 2015-112, this is concerning taxi cab rates and a special discount for elderly or disabled passengers, for the purpose of providing that for a trip originating at Richmond International Airport, the rate shall be $10, or the charge registered on the meter, whichever is greater, plus $2.30 instead of $2, that stays on consent. On the regular agenda, we've only got two items. Item 17 is Ordinance 2015-79, and this is requiring the fiscal impact statements and economic impact statements be submitted to council upon the introduction of a mayor patron ordinance authorizing certain economic development projects to be funded or supported by the city. This one's going to finance and economic development, and will come back to council on the 13th of July. And item number 18 is Resolution 2014-R258, this is reversing the decision of Commission of Architectural Review, and the decision denied a certificate of appropriateness for proposed painting of exterior brick portions of a condominium of 407 North Allen Street. This paper would serve to reverse that and allow that to go ahead, that's being continued also. It says on the paper, it continued on September 14th, but in the informal meeting, they said it's going to be continued till July 13th, so that's what we'll go with right now. In any event, it's not going to be heard tonight. So where do we stand? Sixteen items on consent, two continued, one amended and continued, so we're down to thirteen items there. On the regular agenda, two items, both continued, so nothing on the regular agenda. Citizens' Comment Period, we have six speakers tonight. Among the topics I'll be talking about, Maggie Allen Walker statue, GRTC caravan, Richmond Police Memorial Statue, UCI Road World Championships, Police Memorial Statue, and appreciation to council for approval of the pay raise, this coming from, I believe, a member of the police department. So that's Citizens' Comment Period, we've only got two items on the awards and presentations. One is Richmond Mental Health Awareness Month, and one is the Richmond Region Energy Alliance Solarize RVA Program, those two are there. And don't forget, they knew way they're running the meetings, things have changed, and this is the way it goes now, we'll start off, invocation, pledge of allegiance, roll call, emergency evacuation plan, then awards and presentations, and then Citizens' Comment Period. It's been moved around over the years, but now it's coming up right after awards and presentations. Then we get the actions and appointments and reappointments, followed by the agenda review and amendments, then we'll get to the regular agenda, well, there is none tonight, and then consent agenda, followed by the approval of minutes, reports of council, new legislation, and then adjournment, so that's the way it stacks up now. How long will we be here? Who knows? That's always a question. It could be a short meeting, it could be, who knows? It could be longer. We'll find out, because we'll be getting started in just about five minutes from right now. I'm Dick Harmon, stay tuned.
Not for him, but for the reporter, I guess, at the bowling alley.
Oh yeah, I was like, he didn't even tell me, he didn't tell me either, he was like, why weren't you there? I'm like, I didn't even know that. Yeah, and he comes to my house, he's the only reporter that I've ever, well, normally I've never been there, but he, he has been wonderful, you know, and he covered, we took five of them all together, and they actually took this first day, because he was, you know, the, 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 and it took a while, and I, I thought it was like, you just took it, you know, carefully by his, you know, and I'm thinking, oh, it's insurance, it's insurance, but, um, we could actually, and we took it, took it, and he got, um, they kept, sitting up, it was just, it was, um, but Chris, how did that, you know, he, he put up her, I mean, that's, that's been wonderful. And Chris is really great, he's like one of my best supporters, but he is, he's a blast, like, yeah, he's a very person, he's, and we have, um, he's a, he decides to, you know, you know, he's been, you know, he's, you know, he's, you know, there's all the other reporters that, you know, some of the time, and that's, you know, he's, he's, like, I know, I know, he's a guy, yeah. He's so much, he's so, like, he's, like, I know, because he's, like, with the story, you know, and he does these crazy things, it's so entertaining. I know, I sit there and I watch him, he's just ready to, you know, do his thing, and I just laugh at it, he's, he's, like, he should be a rock. Yeah, he's very, yeah. So is the actual, and I think in books, and I, and every reporter knows, like, of Chris Thomas, right, what he does, and like, everybody else comes to do the stories, one night, and he's the top, like, looking down on, like, how, and that's, you know? Yeah, he is, he is, yeah, I didn't know what he was like, he was, like, so much, he was, so depressing. Well, it is, yeah, I tried to stay out of people's houses too, for a while, and also for their, right, exactly, and he didn't show, like, and he often shows his art live out, like, so. Yeah. I can tell, I can, yeah. But we thought, yeah, we really needed to, yeah, we did, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. That's okay, you're fine, no, no, you're fine, you're fine, we got it. Like, like, you. Right. 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 Mm-hmm.
Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting will now come to order. At this time, we will be given our invocation by Reverend Dr. Jim Somerville, the First Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Lord, sometimes we say that we want to be completely fair, that we don't want to take sides, and yet you do, all the time. You always take the side of the poor, the dispossessed, the disenfranchised. You always stand up for those who have been put down, pushed around, and shoved to the fringes of society. It becomes clear that if we are not on their side, we are not on your side, and could end up on the wrong side on the day it matters most. And so on this day, give us permission to take sides, and the good sense to take yours. Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as it is in the Father, and Jesus Christ.
Madam Clerk, please provide the chamber emergency evacuation announcement, followed by the citizen speaker's guideline.
Upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chamber, or the east or west stairwells outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot bordered by Clay, 8th, and 9th Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Citizens wishing to speak during public hearings and/or the citizen comment period have generally three minutes to speak. Persons appearing before council are not allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties or address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the President of Council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and further disciplinary action as necessary, which could include barring from attendance at future meetings of the city council for a period of six months.
Madam President, for the record, all members of council are in attendance this evening, and individuals standing in the rear of the chambers are asked to please be seated where seats are available per council's rules of procedure. And also, I would like to remind the audience that applause is only permitted during the awards and presentations portion of tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have the new Director of Social Services, Ms. Shonda Giles. You'd like to just come forward and say a few words?
Good afternoon, and those words will be very few. My name is Shonda Giles, I am the new Director of Social Services, and I really do look forward to working with you all, and I'm very excited to be able to serve my city in this capacity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's move on to the appointments and reappointments.
Yes, council members, you've provided a listing of appointment and reappointment recommendations from your standing committee. Is there a motion to accept the recommendations as presented?
Uh, no. Okay.
There's a motion, and a second, council is voting on the appointments and reappointments as presented in the packet. Mr. Bellows?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Argalesto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That motion has passed.
All right, at this time, we're going to the awards and presentations for leave.
Okay, tonight's first recognition being presented by 7th District Council Representative Cynthia Newbill proclaims May as Richmond Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental health has a significant impact on learning, social development, and general well-being, and can affect individuals throughout their lifetime. There have been significant advances in behavioral and brain research that are positively affecting the field of mental, behavioral, and emotional health. A sterling example of a mental health organization serving the Richmond community is the Richmond Behavioral Health Authority, a quasi-government entity which was established by Richmond City Council in 1996, and provides mental health, intellectual disability, and substance abuse and prevention services on behalf of Richmond residents. To help raise awareness of the importance of assistance, education, and treatment of those living with mental health issues, and respond to an increasing number of military veterans returning from combat during World War II in 1994, a National Mental Health Awareness Month was begun in the U.S. In order to further affirm the need for good mental health and advocate on behalf of our children and families, Richmond City Council Mayor Dwight C. Jones hereby proclaimed the month of May to be Richmond Mental Health Awareness Month, thank the many dedicated mental health providers and supporters, and encourage all Richmond residents to support the mental and emotional health resources, services, and cares, and care individuals and families need to live happy, healthy, and prosperous lives.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Lindstrom, if you would join us.
Simply would like to express our sincere thanks and appreciation for the incredible leadership, advocacy, and services that RBHA has, but even more so is preparing to provide in this community and service to the many citizens who are addressing on a daily basis the challenge of mental health. We know very well that in our, throughout our Commonwealth and throughout our city, the need far exceeds the capacity. But I have to say, and recognize and appreciate you and your leadership, I really have to say that I am much more comforted, that we are on the right track, we are not there yet but making major inroads in terms of providing mental health quality, patient-centered, mental health services for the citizenry throughout the city of Richmond, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thank you so much, and most of you know that I succeeded Jacqueline Ear as CEO of RBHA last August 1st, and I'm not completely unfamiliar to you. I want to introduce to you by her presence, Ms. Shana McCray, who has been with RBHA for some time, but ascended to the role of Mental Health Director for the authority just this last fall. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to address the Organizational Development Committee of Council later this summer, to give you a fuller report of goings-on at the RBHA. But I might tell you that we've entered in the business of delivering, right now, the four Rs. We're not an educational organization, for sure, but our mantra right now centers around some exciting new developments that we're undertaking. I won't go into all the details right now, but they involve enhancements to mental health, intellectual and developmental disability services, as well as substance abuse services. R for recovery, R for Rich, which is our integrated primary behavioral health care that we've initiated and now have served over 500 people since last June 1st, and have enrolled over 300 people in ongoing services and federal data reporting for the grant that sustains that program. Reach, which used to be called Start, and some of you are familiar with that, but RBHA now is the property owner of Three Acres in Chester, where we're building a six-bedroom center for individuals in need of respite or crisis services who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. And we have a very major undertaking to assure the presence of the kinds of services that Rubicon provides in our community will be sustained well into the future. And I'll tell you the details of that later. Thank you very much.
Dr. Lindstrom, again, thank you for all that RBHA is doing in our community to address mental health.
Thank you very much. (applause).
The next recognition being presented by Council Vice President and 3rd District Council Representative Chris Hilbert recognizes Richmond Region Energy Alliance Solarize RVA for helping to increase the use of solar energy. Established in 2010, Richmond Region Energy Alliance is a nonprofit organization that assists Richmond area residents with accessing services to help increase the energy efficiency of their homes and businesses. As part of this effort, in 2014, the Richmond Regional Energy Alliance created Solarize RVA, a bulk solar panel purchasing program to help reduce costs and encourage and increase the use of solar energy by area homeowners and businesses. Maximizing utilities of scale, Solarize RVA bundles individuals, customers, together to purchase solar systems and contract installations as a group. It is also, it also assists with tax credits and discounts and other cost reduction efficiencies. Richmond City Council hereby recognizes, honors, and celebrates the Richmond Region Energy Alliance and their Solarize RVA program for helping to increase the use of solar energy, and encourages everyone to learn more about this program and consider the possibility of solarizing their homes and businesses.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Ms. Hill, for coming out. Last month, I believe it was, here, time flies, I was at a wonderful event on Southside, where we had an unveiling of a home with solar panels, and it was just so exciting to see so many people there, and the energy efficiency that will be, allow this, this family to get off the grid, for the most part, which is, which is very nice. We all want to promote the efficient use of our resources and our natural resources, and I thought this would be a good opportunity for Solarize RVA to come and to get more information about this program, which is why I invited Ms. Hill here this evening, so if you could explain more about the program, we want to get the word out to it, so as many Richmonders can take advantage of this as possible, and even the whole region. Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much, Councilman Hilbert, President Mosby, and the entire council. It's wonderful to be here this evening, and thank you so much for the recognition. My name is Tara Quinn, I'm marketing and outreach consultant for Richmond Region Energy Alliance, and want to thank you all on behalf of our executive director and the entire board of the Richmond Region Energy Alliance. The Energy Alliance is wholly owned subsidiary of Project Homes, and so want to acknowledge their involvement in well as launching the program. And Solarize RVA 2015, this is the second year of our Solarize RVA program. In the first year, we were able to install solar systems on 20 homes in the area, and this year, we've expanded the program to include commercial applications, so the, the impact is widening, and we so much appreciate your support in raising awareness about the program and the opportunities that it presents to the city of Richmond and the entire Richmond region as well, so.
And that website.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yeah, the website is www.solarizervaa.org, and that can provide all the information available to learn more, sign up. We've already had over 50 folks sign up this year for the program since its launch on Earth Day, and it runs through just July 15th this year. So urge everyone to check that out as soon as possible.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Madam President, that concludes our awards and presentations for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move on to review the amendments to tonight's agenda.
Amendments to tonight's agenda are as follows. Item 1, ordinance number 2014-208, will be continued to the Monday, July 13 Council Meeting. Item 2, ordinance number 2014-217, will be continued to the Monday, July 13 Council Meeting. Item 6, ordinance number 2015-99, will be amended and continued to the Monday, June 8 Council Meeting later this evening. Item 17, ordinance number 2015-79, will be continued to the Monday, July 13 Council Meeting. And item 18, resolution number 2014-R258, will also be continued to the Monday, July 13 Council Meeting. Madam President, those are all of tonight's agenda amendments.
Does any council member have any additional amendments to tonight's agenda? Madam Clerk, please call the question.
I will need a motion to accept the amended agenda as presented. Councilmember Agelastow, will you make that motion? Councilmember Bilalz, will you second that motion?
Second.
Council is voting on this evening's agenda amendments as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agelastow?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if we could go back to our citizens' comments. Period speaker, please.
Yes, the first speaker is Melvin Jones. Melvin Jones.
Good afternoon. Can I get somebody to pass these out? Please. Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Melvin Jones, and I'm a resident of Richmond, Virginia. I come before you this evening to discuss the statue for Ms. Maggie Walker. Back in October 25th of 2010, City Council passed a paper to do a study, I guess it was a study, to put a statue of Maggie Walker at Adams Broad and Brook Road. But it's been bypassed. They got, you got a budget here, estimated budget of $300,000. Before Mr. Marshall had left, I asked him about giving up a million dollars for the project, which he wouldn't, took a million dollars. But City Council had passed a paper before, and people are not doing what y'all asked them to do. Now, I've got over 100,000 signatures to put a statue of Maggie Walker at Adams Broad and Brook Road, but they're not following up what they're supposed to do. Now, you know, if we can pay $300,000 for somebody to do this drawing and upscale apartments at Lee Street, and just not doing what y'all asked them to do, you know, I don't want this project to be like it was over there at Hugh and that, where you paid somebody $193 an hour to pass a water. I mean, you know, it's ridiculous the way people are spending taxpayers' money. That's my money. So what I want to do is, I want somebody to get behind this. It was supposed to be the city attorney, I haven't heard anything from the city attorney about this, at all, nobody. Ms. Mosby?
Yes, sir, I'm actually looking over at my Vice President.
Okay. But, you know, other council members have questioned me about it, and I don't know what's going on, so, you know, I'm almost left in the blind on it. You know, I met with the mayor and Mr., let's see, who else, David Hicks, and we had a meeting up here at the second-floor conference room, and the mayor even said that he would like to see the statue of Maggie Walker put at Adams Broad and Brook Road. So my thing is, somebody not working together.
Okay, Mr. Jones, we're going to let Vice President Hilbert respond to.
I know. Mr. Jones, you and I have spoken on this matter, and I think things have not moved as swiftly as we would like. There is certainly, there was money in the budget last year to begin this process, and the Arts Commission here, if I'm probably not getting that name right, but they have met on this and are working towards the design, are they not, or?
Yes, sir, the design has supposedly been done, and from what I hear, it's supposed to be, somebody's supposed to be coming here, meeting, and going through checking the sites. But when the guy did the drawing and I saw it, I mean, I was blown out the water on that one, because it's like, you know, you're not doing what council tells you to do. You know, I mean, Mr. Hilbert, if you can bring the bicycles here, you can bring a beer company here, I mean, this black lady right here, Ms. Maggie Walker, she lent the city of Richmond $10,000. I mean, come on now, y'all, get up off y'all butts, come on, help me out. You know, I mean, somebody not doing their job. And I'll be down here every day if I have to find out what I need to do. I even called the mayor's office to try to get a meeting set up before I came to council. I ain't get no feedback. I did hear from Mr. Rogers, but, you know, it's, people not doing what they're supposed to do, and if they not going to do it, I like to know, because people are asking me what's going on with the statue for Maggie Walker.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
And I'll certainly look into that, and we can, I'll get you exactly where we are in the process, Mr. Jones, and I appreciate your involvement in this, and certainly, this wouldn't be going anywhere. We wouldn't have had any funding in the budget were it not for your actions. So, thank you.
The next speaker is Roderick Bullock.
Good evening, Council President, Vice President, Honorable City Council Members. I'm coming to speak on the behalf of myself and the citizens that ride the caravan. I had the opportunity to go to the meeting for the Advisory Committee, and pretty much GRTC said that we need to come before the City Council, because you all made the choice to make us pay two tickets to go to the county. Also, they pretty much basically said that the City Council is the reason why our services suck. I mean, ultimately, I mean, that's what they were saying, that you need to talk to your council members, because they only give us $12 million to run a budget for the whole entire GRTC budget, and the county matches ride for ride as far as paratransit, which is an atrocity to the people, because ultimately, we have the highest rate of poverty in the state of Virginia. It's 25% as far as citywide metropolitan areas. And ultimately, you all don't care, I mean, I honestly don't think no one cares about the disabled. And I didn't ask to be disabled, I was fine. As everyone up here know that I was fine. But ultimately, I have to depend on the Sevan now, and the service is horrendous, and we were just trying to get answers why the services, we can't get services out in the county, we got to get out at a certain time, and they treat us like we're inhumane, we got to get out of the county by 7:00. And they said, oh, that's the City Council fault, talk to the City Council members. And that's what, and he directly told us to talk to the City Council members and find out why they raised the, and they say it was a 63 vote, that you raised it for two tickets into the county. You know how much of a financial burden that is on people? And I didn't know about that at first, but now I know. It's a huge financial burden. You all need to rethink and revisit it. I mean, ultimately, it's a shame that we, as citizens that put our life and give our back to this city, and as hard as I work for this city, and I haven't got anything, anything with as far as I've been disabled, as far as how the disabled is being treated, and everybody, it's seriously a problem that people in poverty and people that's disabled get the worst end of the stick. We got the lowest on the totem pole, and we have no respect from the city, and then I hear this in a meeting, that you all did that to people that was impoverished already? And I mean, it's serious, y'all really need to think that. Every member, especially the 67th and 8th, 5th, 2nd, none of you all should have voted for that against the necessary, it was like a war on poverty. You shouldn't have voted on that. A 63 vote, and this is what happens? Y'all really need to think that. Everybody that's in your district is only maybe one, two districts in the city of Richmond that is affluent people. The rest of us are in poverty, and that's a shame. I'm appalled at all of y'all even to make that decision to even do people and to put that burden on people. It is, you paying $12...
Sir?
...to go to the county. Thank you.
On the rise.
The next speaker is Glenwood Burley.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. Congratulations you on your position as the President. I'm Glenwood Burley. I'm a 42-year resident in the city of Richmond in Ms. Graziano's district, and a 23-year member of the Richmond Bureau of Police. Just two blocks away, up Marshall Street, near 7th, sits a beautiful bronze police memorial stature with 28 names of Richmond police officers killed in the line of duty. For decades, this stature, approximately 10 feet tall, has been neglected and abandoned. I'm not burning my three minutes tonight criticizing how this stature became as it is. However, it is a fact that mayors, past and current council members, including presidents, Richmond police chiefs, and current police officers have never seen this stature nor knew it existed. Most sadly, my fellow retirees and other current officers, including the members of the Police Memorial Foundation and myself, who knew this statue existed, yet we egregiously disrespected this beautiful gift from the public. I come tonight to apologize, to apologize on behalf of all who have allowed this beautiful memorial to stand among the weeds, the trash, the beer cans, and the smell of urine, and the darkness of silence. At 7:00 AM Friday morning, the last day of National Police Week, I sat in front of police headquarters with a dozen red roses, waiting for Chief Durham. Shortly thereafter, he arrived, and therefore shortly after that, he placed the roses at the stature. That was a new day. It was his first trip there, his first knowledge that a memorial existed. It was unexpected what he witnessed. Policemen, Marines, paratroopers usually don't cry. I've cried twice this month, once at the statue with the pugnacious smell of urine that cut my breath, and the other last week when I was with Chief Durham. We shared the pain of what we'd seen. We embraced each other in his office and formed a bond, committed to never allowing this statues to stand in vain. A research and relocation site committee is currently being selected. Chief Durham is accepted to serve. This morning, I got contact from Tom Sylvester, the president of Time Dispatch, he's accepted to serve, and I have one of the gentlemen inside of the country, and I haven't gotten a response back from him. Arrangements are already in place. We have that statue moved at the compliments of a family-owned crane company once and unite the site is determined. Assistance has been requested from the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts to get that statue cleaned up as soon as possible. The city has been instrumental since last week...
Mr. Burley?
...to do cleaning.
Mr. Burley, could you please summarize?
In closing, as our current city leaders, I please ask upon you that in the next several days that you visit that memorial, hold its hand and reflect in a moment of silence and pay your formal respects. I appreciate your support and input, and Madam President, I welcome a volunteer member from the council, or you to appoint member to serve as a liaison to our committee. I have kept Ms. Robertson, Ms. Graziano, and Ms. Trammell informed of the objectives in the cleanup. I ask those here tonight in support of our efforts to please stand quietly and acknowledge our support. Thank you, ma'am, and members of council.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Ms. Trammell?
I have a question. Glen?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. You called it, what did you say, something about a research, what did you call it? Research site?
Research has a purpose, because this foundation was formed 30, approximately 35, 38 years ago, and it was a considerable amount of money raised. One of the things we want to look at as a committee is if there is any money left, which there's speculation and words to the wind that there is. We want to know where it is, who has it, what account it's in, and utilize that money and the aspects of moving it and cleaning it up and so forth. And that's one of the things that we're going to investigate...
Okay.
...and see if there's any members of the foundation still around or living. So far, I know of none that have contacted me.
All right.
Want to keep you all informed of what we're doing, and I'm optimistic with the two members that accepted the service to be on the committee. Want to have a liaison, if you'll give me one, and get the statue cleaned up and moved. My date is Thanksgiving week. Thank you.
And also, when we get our new money, I think it comes in July, I will also make a donation to this research site. I'll make a donation, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
There are numerous responses from the country, since this has became a media issue, of wanting to make donations, pledges to help in getting a statue moved and cleaned up, so we've had a unique and unexpected amount of support from people in the city and the country wanting to help and put sunshine on that statue. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Graziano has a question.
Yeah, Mr. Burley, I actually don't have a question, just two things. One, I want to thank you for your service to the city of Richmond, and I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention and to making something great happen to this memorial, so that we can all once again be proud of it. And if you need any help, bless, no. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael Gilbert.
Good evening. Now, hang on, one quick second. I know, Ms. Capella, I've requested an additional minute or two, is that?
President Mosby would be able to respond to that. He's asking President Mosby concerning his email about additional minute or two concerning the incident with the phone call from the police department.
That's in additional to what he's going to speak about with the UCF, is that?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, I was just looking for maybe a minute or two, just to highlight that issue, because it actually was caused by my citizen comment. Okay, thank you. My name is Michael Gilbert, I reside in the 7th District, President Mosby and members of council. First, want to bring to your attention, I got a very interesting phone call last Friday from Ms. Veronica Pearson at the police department, who unbeknownst to me at the time, turns out, was the General Counsel for the police department, and who inquired about the nature of my comments upcoming to citizen comment. And quite frankly, that really took me back, because it's, and I don't mean to be blunt here, but none of the business of the police, what I'm going to say during citizen comment, nor anyone else. It's public comment. And it really upset me, because this has never happened before when I, or I think anyone else, has spoken during citizen comments. So it makes me wonder, why was I singled out? And I called the clerk's office and Ms. Capella, and she was very helpful, and explained to me the process, and explained that when they send information, the clerk's office sends information over to the administration, it includes the citizen, their name, their district, and their topic, and no other information. So how did, and under what authority, the police department then decide to get my personal cell phone number and give me a nice friendly jingle, asking about the nature of my comments? It's pretty upsetting. And so I actually talked to Chief Durham, and he was very helpful, and was very nice. But I'm trying to figure out, and I'd just like to bring to your attention, why was I singled out, and who authorized this individual to contact me, especially the General Counsel? I mean, no good deed goes unpunished, I get it, but come on. And on top of that, how did this individual get my personally identifiable information? And who authorized that? Because it sounds like there's a broken process and broken policy in there somewhere. It's just really upsetting and troubling to me, and pretty offensive and unprecedented. So just putting that out there. Now, I'll get to the heart of my comments, and thank you for the extra time. As a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for the 7th District, I'd like to share with you the plans from Richmond 2015 and the Parks Department for the upcoming event. All right, you ready? The plan is to cut the grass along Libby Hill and Taylor's Hole Park, re-caulque a statue, replace some windows, and finally, replace, literally replace cobblestones on 23rd Street Hill, because it was paved haphazardly about three years ago. That's the plan. That's it. Now, I've called and spoken with Parks and Rec, and I've requested something, anything that could serve as a more con- that could serve as a more concrete plan of action, a document, a PowerPoint, but there isn't one because that's it. Nothing else is being planned, nothing. Now, a recent article examined the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand visitor figure, so let's just say we take ten percent of that, forty-five thousand of those individuals are unique, right? These visitors are coming here to the city because they love cycling. They come from a culture where cycling is an alternative transportation. It's just transportation. They love the outdoors. So shouldn't we be planning activities, events, or have some sort of action plan, anything to show our guests a good time so, I don't know, maybe they'll come back next year and we can get more money into our local economy every year thereafter? Now, let me bring something else to your attention. And where this is all rooted and how I figured all this out was I co-founded a local nonprofit, Ride Richmond. I'm not promoting it. Our mission is to educate cyclists through events. And a year and a half before Richmond 2015, I submitted a permit request for us to be at Taylor's Hill Park on the twenty-seventh of September, and I was promised in writing that permit. And about three weeks ago, I was told I have to now go through Alan Roethert. All right, that's fine. So I call Alan, and Alan tells me that all of Taylor's Hill Park has a major title sponsor and that space for tents are being sold. Now I should call Tim Miller at 2015. So I call Tim. Tim tells me the same thing and that the park will be for VIP access. I don't even know what that means, okay? Now, the argument that both Alan and Tim had put forward is that the city needs to generate money, which justifies selling the park. I get that. I'm not arguing that the city needs to generate money. I mean, I was the city economist, okay? I get it. But what I am arguing is that we, the organization, was promised this permit a year and a half before the event, and now it's not being honored. And beyond my personal issue with that, it's really frustrating that there's been no plan whatsoever to include local residents or local groups in these parks. There's no communication because there's nothing to communicate. This is an opportunity to showcase the event, to highlight the local residents and local groups that contribute to bicycling year-round and have done so for decades, okay? Now, I will say that Dr. Merrifield has promised that no parks will be closed to the public. He said that. But let me ask you this. Do you really believe that Joe Loco will be able to walk onto Taylor's Hill Park adjacent to the Twenty-third Street Hill, arguably the biggest climb? I'm tracking, I'm going to summarize, the biggest climb and draw for the 2015 event, next to VIPs whose organizations have paid thousands of dollars for tent space, next to an organization that's paid a six-figure amount to become the title sponsor and have an equally good view of the race? If you think that's plausible, I applaud it, but I don't. And I could be completely wrong. In fact, I'm fine with that. I hope I'm wrong, but let's have the communication and the dialogue and the discussion to prove me wrong. So my request to you is this. Which one of you elected to represent us and the facilities we pay for will step up, patron, and help pass an O and R that requires at least twenty-five percent of the park space, public park space?
Mr. Gilbert.
Be reserved for access for local residents and local nonprofit groups. If this is truly a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, let's get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Newbill?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Gilbert, thank you. Thank you first for serving as our rep on Parks and Rec. And just in follow-up to the conversation with Mr. Gilbert regarding Taylor's Hill Park and the permit, the opportunity to have further discussion, I've spoken with Alan Roethert as well as Dr. Merrifield. I think Dr. Merrifield is in the audience and would love to appreciate the opportunity for him to meet with Mr. Gilbert to discuss the possibilities further relative to the park, et cetera. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Capel, do you have a response in reference to?
Yes, to Mr. Gilbert. Back to your earlier comments about the police department contacting you and how they obtained your personal information. When you and I spoke via phone, I advised you about administrative docket. Those documents that we take to administrative docket do not have personal information. However, per council's rules of procedure, page thirteen, indicates that we are to collect addresses, telephone numbers, and identifying information from individuals wishing to sign up for citizen comment period. And I was advised that someone following administrative docket came to our office and requested the address information. And it's also my understanding that the general counsel for the police department also reached out to one or two other individuals who were signed up to speak. So that's how they obtained the information, I later found out.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kelly Wentz.
Hi, my name is Kelly Wentz, and I'd like to thank everybody for having me here tonight. I am a North Chesterfield resident, but I also am co-founder and president of an organization called United for Blue. I am here tonight on behalf of the Richmond Police Memorial that's located at Festival Park. I understand Mr. Burley has done a wonderful job presenting it to you this evening. I knew nothing about this memorial until I saw it on the news, and my heart broke. This memorial was dedicated May sixteenth, nineteen eighty-seven. It has twenty-eight names on it from eighteen sixty-nine, two thousand and three. I'm going to name a couple of those names because I want you to know them. Officer Douglas Wendell, end of watch, seven-thirty, two thousand and three, shot and killed while responding to a call. He was shot four times. He left behind a wife, two sons, a daughter, brothers, and a parent. He was dedicated for five years on the Richmond Police Department. Police Officer Thomas Francis Mongo McCann, end of watch, ten-fourteen, nineteen ninety-eight, shot and killed after a vehicle chase. He dedicated twenty years to the Richmond Police Department. He left behind a fiance. Detective George Ronald Taylor, end of watch, June fifteenth, nineteen eighty-six, shot and killed during a traffic stop. He dedicated thirteen years to the Richmond Police Department. He left behind a wife and two daughters. He was killed the day before his fortieth birthday. How fair is it that we have forgotten these people, these officers? They gave their lives for us. We left that statue there, unknown. Nobody knew about it. Chief Durham had it cleaned up, thankfully, but this memorial needs to be honored. They gave their all for protecting us. I went downtown this weekend, and I polled people within the community on the streets of Cary Town and Chaco Bottom. I talked to approximately a hundred and twenty-eight people. Out of that hundred and twenty-eight people, three heard about the statue. Never saw it, they heard about it through the news. That's sad. That shouldn't be that way. These officers gave everything. This is not how our fallen should be honored. We should have that statue out in plain view. People need to know this memorial. They need to move this memorial. We need not to forget about them. I thank you guys for listening to us, and please, let's move it.
The next speaker is Brad Nixon.
Evening, Madam President and fellow council members. My name is Brad Nixon. I'm a detective with the Richmond Police Department, been here twelve years, and I'm vice president of the Richmond Coalition of Police. Gives me great satisfaction to come to you tonight, basically to give you thanks and I'm speaking on behalf of the two-hundred-and-sixty members of the Richmond Coalition of Police and several other police officers that are thoroughly ecstatic of the, that you guys were able to come together and find money in the budget for airstep increase this year within career development. I know you guys have a thankless job. We totally understand that. Over the last several months, up until the last year, you've invited us into your office, listened to us speak, listened to either myself or our president or bill panel lead to speak on our behalf. You've read our emails and responded back to them for that. I thank you. The only reason there isn't a large contingency with me this time is other, there was a little confusion on the, on the date of this meeting and when we were going to have it, and I felt that it was important for me to come before you sooner rather than later. So I just want to say thank you for, for listening to us, for having our back, and for, and for doing what you do, and for finally, after five of the last six years, not having a step increase. We are extremely thankful. I have people come up to me daily now recently during this process as we've been watching it unfold and thanking me, and I tell them, you need to thank city council because you guys were the ones that listened and were able to make the change and find the funding for us. So I just want to say thank you very much.
Madam President. Thank you. Ms. Trammell.
Brad, I want to thank you for taking your time to come down here. I know a lot of people have been calling myself, and they wanted council members' numbers and all that, and I said, just come down here, and I want to thank you for coming down here to thank all of us because this is what it took, a team of all nine of us to do this. And thank you all for what you all do every day for us. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes our list of citizen speakers for this evening.
Madam President.
Ms. Robinson.
I want to thank all the speakers for coming down and their comments this afternoon. I'd like to go back to Mr. Bullock as it relates to the caravan and ask if the staff would request a presentation to the Land Use and Transportation Committee in regards to the comments that were expressed. And secondly, the statue, the police memorial statue is in the Sixth District, and I would be more than happy to have my liaison to serve on the committee if it would please the council to do that as well for the relocation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Madam Clerk, please provide a review of tonight's items on the consent agenda.
Madam President, the consent agenda items for tonight are as follows. Item three, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash ninety-six, to execute a project agreement between the city and the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for the purpose of receiving a one-point-five-million-dollar grant to fund improvements to Main Street Station. Item four, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash ninety-seven, to execute four invoice agreements between the city and the Greater Richmond Aquatics Partnership for the purpose of renting a swimming pool facility for the Department of Rec, well, Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Competitive Swim Team Practice Sessions, one through seven. Item five, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash ninety-eight, to authorize the special use of three-twenty North Thirty-second Street for the purpose of a mixed-use development. Item seven, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one hundred, to amend city code concerning the Main Street or Uptown Parking Overlay District to modify the boundaries of such district and establish new parking standards. Item eight, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one oh one, to amend the official zoning map for the purpose of rezoning certain properties along West Main and West Cary Streets and in the Main Street or Uptown Parking Overlay District. Item nine, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one oh three, to amend city code concerning the real estate taxation of certain dwellings of the surviving spouses of members of the armed forces killed in action for the purpose of reflecting amendments to Virginia Code. Item ten, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one oh five, to amend city code concerning bus fares into Appeal City Code, section one-ten dash one-eighteen, concerning transfer points for the purpose of authorizing a fare-pass program and repealing requirements concerning transfers. Item eleven, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one oh six, to declare that a public necessity exists and to acquire eleven-fourteen North Twenty-sixth Street and to authorize the conveyance of such property for one dollar to Elder Holmes Corporation for the purpose of eliminating blight and making such property available for redevelopment. Item twelve, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one oh seven, to declare that a public necessity exists and to acquire twelve oh seven North Twenty-seventh Street and to authorize the conveyance of such property for one dollar to Elder Holmes Corporation for the purposes of eliminating blight and making such property available for redevelopment. Item thirteen, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one oh eight, to declare that a public necessity exists and to acquire twelve oh eight North Thirty-third Street and to authorize the conveyance of such property for one dollar to Richmond Metropolitan Habitat for Humanity Incorporated for the purposes of eliminating blight and making such property available for redevelopment. Item fourteen, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one oh nine, to declare that a public necessity exists and to acquire fourteen-twenty-five North Twentieth Street and to authorize the conveyance of such property for one dollar to Richmond Metropolitan Habitat for Humanity Incorporated for the purposes of eliminating blight and making such property available for redevelopment. Item fifteen, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one-ten, to execute a standard project administration agreement between the city and the Virginia Department of Transportation to provide funding for the restoration of Main Street Station. Item sixteen, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one-twelve, to amend city code concerning taxicab rates and a special discount for elderly or disabled passengers for the purpose of providing that for a trip originating at Richmond International Airport, the rate shall be ten dollars or the charge registered on the meter, whichever is greater, plus two dollars and thirty cents instead of two dollars. Those are all the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll have a public hearing on the consent agenda items. Are there any persons who wish to speak in opposition of any item on the consent agenda? Are there any persons who wish to speak in favor of any items on the consent agenda? Bring it back to council for discussion. I would ask item number two thousand. Band. Two thousand fifteen dash one oh three, item number nine. I wanted to see if all members of council wanted to be added to that. As patrons? Yes? We can call that the question, please?
Madam President, I'd just like to say one, one thing about two different papers that are on the agenda tonight relating to the Uptown area. One is a rezoning of the Urban Business District, and the other one addresses a parking overlay district for the corridor. And essentially, the two of these were to fix some clerical challenges from earlier adoption of ordinances, and I believe that the planning department has done a lot of work to try and reconcile some zoning issues and to make sure that businesses were in compliance when perhaps earlier the, the ordinances were not accurate. I do think also, I'd like to share that, that this will enable for more of the mixed-use development, being that urban business zoning allows for residential development with one off-street parking space per every four units. I think by reducing the parking requirement for certain businesses within the UB of the Uptown area, that this will actually encourage more development for commercial properties rather than for additional residential. So I think that this is a good ordinance, and I appreciate the work that the planning staff put into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agelastow. Madam Clerk, if you could call the question, please?
Council is voting on tonight's consent agenda items as presented. Mr. Bilaus?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agelastow?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted. Okay, if we could move on to papers that need to be amended and continued this evening?
Yes, we have one for consideration, and that is item number six, which is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash ninety-nine, to amend the ordinance which authorizes the use of File One North Second Street to permit medical office uses. And the proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page three, line seven, after the inserted word spaces, insert the phrase "for all uses other than clinical, dental, or medical office uses." Page three, line eight, after the inserted word "A," strike the word "twelve-hundred foot" and insert the word "one-thousand-foot." Page three, line nine, after the period following the inserted words "property," insert the text "If any portion of the building is used for clinical, dental, or medical office uses, the following parking-related requirements shall also apply." One, parking spaces for clients of the clinical, dental, or medical office uses shall be provided on-site. The number of parking spaces required to be provided for these clients on-site shall be the lesser of a percentage of the fifty-seven parking spaces required by this subsection C to be on the site equal to the percentage of the spaces in the building that is used for clinical, dental, or medical office uses, or thirty-four parking spaces. Two, if chapter one-fourteen of the Code of the City of Richmond, two thousand and four, as amended, requires more parking spaces to serve the clinical, dental, or medical office uses in the building than those provided on-site pursuant to subsection one of this subsection C, the remaining parking spaces required shall be located within three-hundred-foot radius of the front door of the building. Three, notwithstanding provisions of subsection one and two of this subsection C, no more than one-hundred-and-forty-five parking spaces shall be required to serve on all uses of the building. I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper as read and to continue the paper to Monday, June the eighth. Councilwoman Graziano, will you make that motion?
Send movement, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Robertson, will you second that? Councilwoman Robertson, will you second that?
Second.
Council is voting on the proposed amendment as read for item number 6, Ordinance Number 2015-99, and to continue the paper to Monday, June the 8th. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Agulhas?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That motion has passed. That paper will be before you on Monday, June the 8th, as amended. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there papers for expedited consideration this evening?
There are no papers for expedited consideration.
All right, let's move on to the approval of the minutes.
The minutes to be approved are from the special council meeting held Monday, May 4th at 5:29 PM. Special council meeting held Friday, May 8th at 4:00 PM. Informal meeting held Monday, May 11th at 4:00 PM. Informal meeting held Monday, May 11th at 6:00 PM. I need a motion to approve those minutes. Councilman Bilalz, will you make that motion? Ms. Graziano, will you second?
Second.
Counsel is voting on the motion to approve the minutes as read. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye, with the exception of May 8th. I was not present, so I must abstain.
And will be noted. Ms. Agulhas?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Thank you. Those minutes have been approved.
Thank you. Let's move on to reports and announcements, starting with Ms. Graziano.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, a little belated, I hope everybody had a wonderful Memorial Day. I hope everybody had fun outside of picnics, going to the beach, going to the pool, but I would also hope that everybody took a minute or two, or maybe five minutes, to remember those who have given their lives for this country and to give a separate thanks. To that, personally, I just hope everybody did that. The only other announcement I have is finance will be held in June, on June 4th, at 3:00 in Chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Madam President. Last Thursday, May 21st, we had our 8th District meeting, and our chief was there, Chief Durham, and he was speaking to the citizens and to the children about that we all got to do our part to help the police and to help one another in our neighborhoods because we all know that our police officers can't do it by themselves and we can't do it, the citizens can't do it by themselves. So, that's why he's encouraging us to start more neighborhood watches in our neighborhood, and if you would call this number, and that is Sergeant Carol Adams, her phone number is 646-4069, 646-4069. She can get you to the right person to start your neighborhood watch in your neighborhood. And we all know that neighborhood watch does work. But, and also, let me just say this, when you have a neighborhood watch or when you're trying to help your neighbors, don't call your neighbor to tell them that somebody is trying to get in their home, or somebody's on their front porch, or that somebody is taking pictures of their home, or somebody is shooting in front of their house, please, please call 911. You must call 911 because they're the only ones that can dispatch the police to the area where the crime is happening. So, again, please call 911 to report whatever's going on. This right here is your smoke alarm. If you call 646-1526, that's 646-1526, those firefighters will come to your home and they will install this for free. It doesn't cost anything. It's probably the only thing that's free right now in the city of Richmond, is these free smoke alarms. And if you can't get them, you can go to the nearest fire station and get them to come to your home, come to your business, come to your church, and install this. And if it needs a battery, they'll put the battery in there because we all know that these smoke alarms save lives, and they will save your pet and save your home. And as our President of the United States of America, Barack Obama, says, "It's no sense in not having this working smoke alarm in your home. Get it while it's free." And if you have any questions, you can call my home at 233-7382. That's my home, 233-7382, and my personal cell is 240-5050, 240-5050. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to invite all 7th District residents to come out tomorrow evening, Wednesday, May 27th, at 6:00 PM, to the East District Center located at 701 North 25th Street. We will have a community meeting there, which will be a joint meeting with the impact team for our community. It will be an opportunity to meet and greet our new Chief Administrative Officer, Ms. Selena Cuffey-Glen, as well as obtain updated information on the UCI World Cycling Championships. We'll hear from Dr. Thad Williamson of the Office of Community Wealth Building. We'll have budget highlights as well as an opportunity to hear from our school board representatives. So, tomorrow evening, 6:00 PM, East District Center would like to, again, extend an invitation to all 7th District residents to come out and to be a part of the community meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Agulhas?
Thank you very much. Tonight, if folks are still watching, they can get to the Oregon Hill Neighborhood Association in about 2 minutes. That will start at 7:00. We're usually too late in these announcements for that to make a difference, but they'll be meeting over at the William Byrd Community House momentarily. Then, on Monday, June the 1st, at 7:00 PM, the Hull Street Midlothian Civic Association will be meeting at Conanea Christian Church at 3,600 McGrand Street. And I want to extend my personal thanks to the Civic Association, as well as Hands-on Greater Richmond, for a wonderful turnout during our 5th District cleanup that they hosted us down in that neighborhood, and it was really remarkable to see that many people come out, and we covered a very large territory, and I feel like everybody walked away feeling that they made a difference. So, thank you for that opportunity. On June the 2nd, which is a Tuesday, at 6:00 PM, the Uptown Association will be meeting. Then, the next day, June the 3rd, will be our 5th District meeting. We're hosting that at 6:30 PM at the Randolph Community Center on Greland Avenue, and I'm pleased to announce that Ms. Selena Cuffey-Glen also accepted our invitation to be present for the district meeting on June the 3rd at 6:30 PM. But we will also have some other presentations from our Parks Department, primarily the James River Park System, and also from our friends at the Emergency Management Division. This week, for those of you that don't know, is the tax holiday for all emergency preparedness supplies. So, if you are in need, if you do not have your home emergency kit, please go online, learn about fixing your own kit, and take advantage of the tax holiday that is this week. On June the 4th, the Friends of William Byrd Park will also be meeting over at the Roundhouse, and I'm excited to say that there are some exciting things happening in the park, lots of more volunteers coming out to support William Byrd Park as one of the city's largest parks and home to the July 4th fireworks. And that is it for my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Robertson?
Thank you, Madam President. There are two meetings that are coming up in the 6th District that I'd like to invite all of the citizens of the 6th District to attend. The first meeting will be this week, May the 29th, at 5:30 at the Bellmead Community Center located at 1800 Lynn Haven Avenue, this Thursday, May the 29th, at 5:30. There will be several vendors that will be exhibiting services that are available to the residents in the community, some, many of the churches in the area that are providing summer camp opportunities for your children. The recreational and parks will be there to share information of available outings for youth this summer when they get out of school. In addition to that, we will have some churches in the area that are providing services and other businesses in the area that are providing services as well. We will also have a representative from Richmond Public Schools that will be addressing the much-talked-about concern about the growth in population of our school-aged children in Southside, where we will talk, give you detailed information on the amendments that are made to the budget to address that overcrowding in Southside, Richmond, and also have a representative from Richmond Public Schools to provide opportunities for preschool registration for next year and talk specifically about their plans for bringing in mobile units and other facilities to address the overcrowding and our future planning that is in process. So, that's Thursday night, May the 29th, at the Bellmead Community Center, beginning at 5:30. And then, on June the 9th, we will have our north-of-the-river town meeting at Hoshkis Field Playground, which is located on Brooklyn Park Boulevard. That meeting will begin at 5:30, and we, I expecting a host of different representatives from the city of Richmond, as well as others, to be on hand to likewise prepare ourselves for our children getting out of school and addressing those needs that parents have to make sure that we give our children engaged and learning experiences over the summer months. So, that will be on June the 9th at Hoshkis on Brooklyn Park Boulevard, beginning at 5:30. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Mr. Bilalz?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to echo Ms. Graziano's comments about Memorial Day. I attended the service at the Virginia War Memorial yesterday and encourage everybody to visit there if you get a chance. One of the best views of the city, but also a very moving memorial. Just one announcement, do have a town hall meeting tomorrow evening at Albert Hill Middle School on Patterson Avenue at 6:00 PM. Originally, the chief had been scheduled to be there, but he was invited, he was already poached away by Mr. Hilbert to his town hall meeting, and then he was going to come to mine, but he was offered an invitation to speak to a veterans group, and since he is a 17-year veteran of the Marine Corps, I figured I better just wait until July. So, the chief will be with us in July, and certainly, that's an event that he didn't want to miss. But we will have our regular meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM at Albert Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Hilbert?
Thank you, Madam President. As Mr. Bilalz just indicated, that this week, Wednesday, May the 27th, at 6:00 PM, we'll be having our next district meeting at Linwood-Holton Elementary, located at the corner of Laburnum and Hermitage Avenues, and our guest will be Chief Durham, and we appreciate his involvement. And if truth be known here, he's had some other meetings that he's had to cancel on us before, but we're glad to see that he's making it. And another special guest will be Councilmember Riva Trammell. We've had other council members to come to the 3rd District meeting, and I appreciate her willingness to be there and to discuss issues of which she's most familiar and her mission and vision for her 8th District in Southside, and how we can collaborate with those north of the river as well. We also will have council deputy chief of staff Vincent Jones and myself will debrief on the budget issues and the outcome of our budget. This summer, excuse me, the Parks and Rec activities are underway, some of them, but you can still sign up by going to richmondgov.com and navigating to the Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities link. There are classes in aquatics, art, and dance, and there's a variety of summer camp experiences. So, I would encourage you to participate in those, as well as have your children do the same. If you would like to be added to the email distribution list to receive district announcements, which also include announcements concerning city government and activities, please email lisatowns, T-O-W-N-E-S, at richmondgov.com or call her at 804-646-6055. If you're contacting me via email, please be certain you're using my city of Richmond email address, which is chris.hilbert@richmondgov.com. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Hilbert.
I would first like to acknowledge the passing of Delegate Frank Hall. He honorably served in the legislature and was a board member of the RRHA, and just wanted to say that he will be missed. Also, wanted to commend council and the school board. Today, we had our first joint meeting, and it was a pledge to begin to work together and for the good of our students, and so I'm just excited about that first joint meeting. Also, in the district, we will have our first of our summer neighborhood walks with the police on tomorrow, Wednesday, May 27th. Please meet us at the Farnbrook entrance of the Farnbrook subdivision, starting at 8:00 PM. Our next district meeting is not until June 18th, but we also will be having our new CAO, Selena Cuffey-Glen, and so we're excited that our district will get to meet her on that day. If residents have any questions or concerns, I can be reached at michelle.mosby@richmondgov.com or you can reach my liaison, yasiah.harris@richmondgov.com, and his number is 804-912-6465.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the introductory papers for this evening.
Madam President, the introduction papers for this evening are as follows. Ordinance Number 2015-114, to authorize the CAO to accept $31,000 from the National Recreation and Parks Association Incorporated and to appropriate to the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities for funding the summer food and the child and adult foods program. Council Public Hearing, June 8th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance Number 2015-115, to authorize the CAO to accept $18,000 from the Supreme Court of Virginia and to appropriate to the judiciary for drug treatment services through the Richmond Adult Drug Treatment Court Program. Council Public Hearing, June 8th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance Number 2015-116, to amend FY 2015 general fund budget to transfer $55,000 from the Department of Information Technology for the purpose of providing a grant to the Richmond Amelance Authority for software licenses. Council Public Hearing, June 8th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance Number 2015-117, to amend FY 2015 general fund budget by re-appropriating $250,000 from the fund balance excess and to appropriate to the Department of Planning and Development Review for Disbursement for the Arts and Cultural District Facade Improvement Program Corporation Agreement. Governmental Operations Standing Committee, May 28th at 5:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, June 8th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance Number 2015-118, to reinstate the career development program for certain police and fire officers. Governmental Operations Standing Committee, May 28th at 5:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, June 8th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance Number 2015-119, to revise the implementation schedule for sworn firefighters and police officers to provide for salary increases and step advancement. Governmental Operations Standing Committee, May 28th at 5:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, June 8th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance Number 2015-120, to authorize the CAO to accept $23,000 from the National Association of County and City Health Officials and to appropriate to the Department of Social Services for initiatives to increase breastfeeding in the city. Council Public Hearing, June 8th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance Number 2015-121, to authorize the CAO to execute a sublease agreement between the city and the county of Hemrick for renting certain offices and common spaces at 203 East Carey Street. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, June 16th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, July 13th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance Number 2015-122, to authorize the CAO to execute a sublease between the city and the school board for the purpose of subletting office space at 4,100 Hull Street. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, July 16th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, July 13th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance Number 2015-123, to authorize the CAO to accept $252,000 from GRTC and to appropriate to GRTC to fund the construction of a temporary transfer plaza and a system-wide bus stop sign replacement project. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, June 4th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, June 8th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance Number 2015-124, to amend and re-ordinate ordinance as previously amended for financing the school budget for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2015 for the purpose of appropriating additional funds. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, June 4th at 3:00 PM. Council- Counsel public hearing June 8th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance number 2015-125, to amend FY 15 general fund budget by transferring and appropriating transferred funds to various agency and non-departmental programs. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, June 4th at 3:00 PM. Counsel public hearing June 8th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance number 2015-126, to approve the work plan and budget for FY 16 for the provision of services in the downtown Richmond Special Service and Assessment Districts. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, June 4th at 3:00 PM. Counsel public hearing June 8th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance number 2015-127, to amend and re-ordain city code for the purpose extending the participation period in the Deferred Retirement Option Program. Governmental Operations Standing Committee, June 25th at 5:00 PM. Counsel public hearing July 13th at 6:00 PM. Ordinance number 2015-128, to authorize the CAO to accept $125,000 in additional state shared sales tax funds for the purpose of providing additional school funding. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, June 4th at 3:00 PM. Counsel public hearing June 8th at 6:00 PM. Resolution number 2015-R35, to approve an expenditure in the amount of $1,1000 from the council district funds to pay Sisters Delight LLC for catering service provided at the January, March, and April 2015 ninth district meetings. Counsel public hearing June 8th at 6:00 PM. Madam President, that concludes the readings of the legislation for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.
Well, one hour, 17 minutes, start to finish tonight. We got started right at 6:00. Called the order, the pledge, the invocation, appointments and reappointments, awards and presentations. Got to the citizens' comment period at 6:17. That ran 30 minutes. We had six different speakers. Got to the consent agenda, that took a whole five minutes. By the time they read everything in, there was no opposition, no one speaking from the audience in favor or opposed, and that went through 9-0. Then we got to one paper being amended and continued, and then we got the approval of minutes, reports from council, introduction of papers, and now we are adjourned. And now, once again, we are adjourned till June 8th is our next meeting. There's only one meeting scheduled in the month of June, in the month of July, the month of August, the month of September. They normally do not meet during the month of August. We'll just have to see how that goes. But in any event, we'll be with you on June 8th, our next time together. And please, warmer weather, drive carefully, don't overdo anything, and we look forward to seeing you again on June 8th. Till then, for gavel to gavel, I'm Dick Harmon saying goodnight.